...who just wants to note that they are in opposition. Her name is Maria Walker and she lives here in Wildomar. We got an email from a Sharon Gober and she is for the marijuana issue. We got one, two, three, four against from Crystal Gill, Lorraine Hanson, Joni Leclerc, and Lori Nunley. They all live here in Wildomar and they're all against it. And we just did get another one that I just forwarded to you against it from Isabel Anduno.
He sounds like he's for it. Isabel?
Isabel?
Yeah, it looks like he's in favor.
I mean, for it. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, you're right.
And then I forwarded you one from John Lloyd and he's for it.
John Lloyd and he is for it. Okay, now we can get to speakers. Okay, the first one is Ryan Filar and he does note he is in Wildomar.
My name is Ryan Filar. I am here to speak against allowing the recreational drug dispensaries in my city. I'm a parent of a son in high school and a daughter in middle school and I'm deeply concerned about the safety with the possibility of the proliferation of drugs in my neighborhood. It is a fact that the crime has already increased in Wildomar with many car thefts and break-ins since the city has started growing. And I feel that opening marijuana dispensary will bring in more questionable characters and a result of crime. The city can't afford to hire more police officers to abate the negative impact of crime and traffic accidents that will come with a dispensary. Also, I don't want my kids exposed to the normalization of the pot. Our kids need to remain alert and sharp and not to be told it's okay to zone out and become languid and nonproductive members of society. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
The next speaker is Ken Mays and I believe he lives here too.
I am from Wildomar and I am for the reasonable regulation of growing anywhere in the city. Anything that's zoned or residential should be allowed to grow an agricultural crop. But I also believe that there should be reasonable regulations to help defray law enforcement costs. The county of Riverside just did a study where they will be bringing in, if they pass, $17 million. Their increased cost for law enforcement is only $2 million. So that brings in another $15 million for their general fund, which we dearly need because we are not getting back VLF, no matter how much we spend on a live use. This is our opportunity to decide for ourselves how we want to bring in the money. We had 53% of the voters had voted for the legalization of marijuana, recreational use. As far as the federal government, once Jeff Sessions is kicked out, it's not going to be an issue. It's on the other side.
The next speaker is Ian Armstrong, not from Wildomar.
Aloha, councilors, mayor. My name is Ian Armstrong. I am the Director of Policy and Economic Development for the Cannabis Research Institute located in Maui, Hawaii. I may not live in your city, but starting next Friday I will. The reason I am moving here is because the Tier Three program on behalf of the Cannabis Research Institute has two patients located in Wildomar. Both of them are cancer patients and both of them receive low dosage medication of CBD and THC. Without this medication, their chemotherapy would probably kill them. It's not a matter of the chemotherapy or the drugs or whether or not you believe in recreational cannabis. The way this nation, the way that our municipalities are proceeding, we need to regulate cannabis. We have constituents within your municipality that are automatically going to be against any form of regulation and go for a complete ban. We also have constituents who are medically ill and do rely on treatment. I myself use medical cannabis. I'll be direct. I use 10mg of THC sublingual dosage every single four hours under doctor supervision. I do that because of the offset from my own chemotherapy. I'm not stoned out of my mind. I'm perfectly informed and capable of holding a conversation. In terms of regulation, Lori Ajax of the California Bureau of Medical Marijuana is creating comprehensive rules and regulations. I personally work with her to make sure that her rules and regulations are both legal and effective in terms of what they want. The scope that Proposition 64 provided for your municipality in terms of creating the rules and regulations, it was left in city and county hands to be able to create their own policies and economics. You can create your own taxes. You can create your own rules. You can create your own bans. If you're terrified of your high school students getting stoned or having access to wax and other recreational aspects, ban those components. I've worked with dispensaries in Colorado that don't sell wax or anything above 10mg of THC. I've worked with counties, cities, state governments. I've consulted with hundreds of different municipalities pertaining to cannabis and I do this free of charge. I do this because the Tier Three program for our organization is the lifeblood of medical research for cannabis. With my two patients here, if you do an outright ban on medical cannabis, you will not only impact them, but probably the 200 patients that would have come to me had you decided to regulate. A lot of your constituents are going to say, "Ban this. Ban this." A lot of your constituents are going to say, "Regulate this." My question that I have for you and what I hope that you'll answer by choosing to regulate is whether or not you believe an outright ban is going to be more beneficial than the potential of exploring a regulatory model. As other individuals have stated, there is no limit on the types of regulations you can effect. In Colorado, for example, drunk driving or impairment via THC is done via a standard field sobriety test.
Okay, I'm sorry. You all have to go. We're going to have three minutes for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Paul Ortiz. Paul Ortiz. Next speaker is Gina Castenan.
Good evening, council and staff and members of the audience. I do live here in Wildomar. This being a special council meeting, but also is a workshop, I have asked some experts in the industry to come and answer any of your questions if you should so have them. There's Terry Wilson in the audience, a business owner of commercial, medical, and recreational cultivation dispensaries in Oregon. Randy Haskins, owner of Canisafe Laboratories, has the only ISO federally certified laboratory in the state of California. He is also a consultant for the state of Nevada and California on ordinance for testing. So if you have questions about edibles, testing, extractions, he can answer those questions for you. As well as, I don't know if he is here yet, a CPA to answer any questions on taxation and banking for you. Also, I don't know that he came in attendance, but an owner of an organic soils and fertilizers and organic grower to address some of those growing issues. The city needs revenues. Even if Walmart comes in, we need multiple streams of revenue. That has been said, 53% of Wildomar residents, which is the majority, have voted for the legalization of marijuana. Those same 53% of people will approve an excise tax in order to, you know, benefit the city. The benefits which include, which some people have said, you know, we don't have the police. These extra taxes, you know, provide additional police and fire and any other special needs that the city thinks or the community thinks that, you know, is important to them. I'm running out of minutes. I didn't get extra minutes here, but I would like council to direct staff to create an ad hoc or a standing committee in order to really fully make a comprehensive ordinance that allows recreational and medical with dispensaries, delivery services, and transportation. Talking with Kevin Jeffries, the county is going to do ordinances. They're working on them as we speak. You know, Elsinore may be considering some kind of restrictive ordinances as well. And if we don't allow this and totally ban it, there will be a big opposition group that would, you know, petition drive to have it, you know, put back in. You already have to put it on the ballot for the excise tax, so why don't we go--
That's it. Thank you. Next person.
The next speaker is Terry Wilson.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. My name is Terry Wilson. A little background on me, that I reside here in California. I was one of the principal appellate in the Riverside case that Mr. Kuhn had spoke about in the state Supreme Court, which established, firmly established, the city's right and responsibility to regulate or to nothing. I currently own and operate a cultivation site and two recreational and medical dispensaries in the state of Oregon. We've been operation now for a year and a half under heavily state regulated and you had questions about how is this tracked? Tracking systems are in place at the state level of what we take in and then we have to report to the state what goes out and they better match. So I've helped many, many cities here in California so far and I was one of the drafters with Measure 91 in Oregon and helped them develop these rules. Been a patient's advocate for over 15 years. Operated a dispensary in Temecula for seven years, which is what prompted the lawsuit and stuff like that. I offer my services to you if you wish to develop an ad hoc committee to have at least the opportunity to have a kind of discussion with somebody in the industry who understands community concerns, as I am in the community. That the benefits of having a regulatory scheme far outweigh a ban because with the ban, the prohibition has been in existence for 80 years and has not stopped the flow. As the father had noted before, it is currently easier for a minor or a teenager to obtain cannabis than it is beer or cigarettes because there are no rules. There is no regulatory scheme. The person who sells the cannabis illegally does not care who he sells it to, whereas a person who sells beer or cigarettes has a valuable license at stake, who has been vetted. For law enforcement's sake, they know where the cannabis is being stored. They have a say-so in how and when the security protocols, hours of operation. The benefits of regulatory far outweigh doing a ban and just putting your fingers and ears and wishing it into the cornfield. I caution, if we do go towards a regulatory scheme, I caution against any excessive taxing. The city and state of New York has attempted to tax cigarettes into oblivion and it has only resulted in now they have an extreme black market of cigarette problem. So they create their own problem. With a strong regulatory scheme, you can get this, the black market, under control and make it more difficult for the minors to obtain it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next one.
Next speaker is Brent Herman.
I'll do my best to get through and quick as I can, if I'm allowed by my daughter. Thank you all for taking the time to even look at this issue. I know that it's a hot button subject for everybody. I am the first person in California to break ground on large-scale cultivation in the city of Desert Hot Springs. I have been at this about two and a half years now with Desert Hot Springs. I've been an advocate for patients' rights for cannabis 20-plus years now. Firsthand patient, have used cannabis now for 25 years on the daily and it's only done good things for me personally. I've seen firsthand with Desert Hot Springs the hurdles and some of the benefits. I mean, to give you an idea, some of the benefits are job creation. We're creating hundreds of jobs right now as we speak. The tax revenue, in one year of the city embracing this and actually moving forward with some of the larger developers that wanted to come into town and even the smaller ones, we've been able to literally double their annual budget with regulation allowing cultivation and some other things to come into town. I only hope that you empower you to take the next step and the step after that in moving towards regulation as opposed to a complete ban. There's too many benefits now that outweigh the negative, like some of the other people that have said. The people that are not being regulated could care less where their cannabis ends up. There's a very stringent policy, I mean, to give you guys an idea, just to obtain the state license. It's going to take a considerable amount of funding, entitlement process of going through the developed land, so you're really going to end up with only the real people that have the wherewithal to stand up with the city and make this happen the right way. I know most of you probably don't use cannabis and if you do, you probably wouldn't admit it out of political suicide. That's neither here nor there. What I do hope is that you do listen to the people of the state of California who overwhelmingly want to see this regulated and are tired of the black market or the gray market or whatever market you want to consider other than a regulated market out there. Some cities out there are dipping their toes in. Some cities are all in. I encourage you to look at both paths, but I encourage you to at least embrace the regulation, embrace what the voters of this city and the state of California really would like you folks to do and really take it as an opportunity to be the leaders you are and step out in front of the pack. I mean, it's either that or kind of get left behind and wish you had at some point because this market will eventually balance and stable out and it's a big opportunity and I hope you guys just see it as that. Thank you so much for your time.
The next speaker is Veronica Langworthy.
I'm a resident of Wildomar and I stood before the council when about half of you were on the council. Ben was on the planning commission years ago about just marijuana being allowed dispensaries in our city so many years ago. And at that time, a lot of people came out. I don't see that maybe because people are just not realizing that this is an issue that's come before us again. But again, I hear that Laguna Woods is brought up as an example of marijuana dispensaries, marijuana regulation. That's a, for those of you who need a little refresher, that's five square miles of gated community, senior living, and you have to live there to participate in that endeavor. And here in Wildomar, we're about 25 square miles with a freeway running through us, median age 35, and so it's not apples to apples. And I don't think it's in the best interest of our community to allow this. It looks like all the excise tax is actually to deal with, which I'm stating the obvious, is to deal with the problems of what is moving forward. Because all those taxes, it said for education, for, it was the other slide, just the whole tax was all about getting people help for the problems related to what you're trying to regulate. So it doesn't make sense to do that, to move forward with it and then to actually have a sales tax where you're saying seven and a half cents on the dollar for whatever it sells for, that 1% of that seven and a half percent would benefit the city, sounds obviously like not a whole lot of money. So I would just like to say that also as a parent and teacher, that I would urge the city council to consider further study, to not move ahead with allowing this establishment. Those that really need medical marijuana are allowed to grow their own, so it's not a business, it's a personal decision. And so they have the accessibility to it. As Jeff Stone mentioned, it is a federally regulated drug and the fight should be on the federal level to change that, what it is regulated as. And also that just, I would urge you to consider our use in the upcoming generations and how it will impact and to take time to study it more and see what's happening in Colorado. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Stephen Lubel.
Evening, council, mayor. I am not a resident of Wildomar. I am retired from the Los Angeles Superior Court where I watched basically, I was on a trial court, the mockery of the compassionate use act. Since I retired, for the last six years, I have been involved in supplemental level of coming together with a regulatory framework that ended up with three bills that became the Medical Cannabis Regulation Safety Act. The governor, as you may know, rewrote those bills and leave passage. It finally creates a real comprehensive regulatory scheme that we've not had in California in 20 years. The reason I keep talking about the medical end is that the adult use Proposition 64 is, the application process is mirrored upon the medical system. So we need to get the medical system up and running in order to get the adult use system up and running. There are 22 different license categories. I've given you a handout that identifies the different license categories and the interplay. In order to get one of these licenses, there is at a minimum 16, and it's the second page of the handout, 16 different items that an applicant is going to have to go through. You, as a local government, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. The rules regarding cultivation, transportation, manufacture, pesticide standards, they're all in place. You may impose a local tax in addition to taxes that are generated statewide where you'll see from the general sales tax, rather minimal amount, but as a local government, you can also implement your own. Unfortunately, as we go forward, the toothpaste is out of the tube and that's why I'm so up for a strong, robust regulatory system. Without it, I think the federal government will in fact come back into California. But we finally have an opportunity to follow through and allow, the key I need to stress to you is you control what you want in your city. Of these 22 license types, you can dictate what you want. You can't go beyond, let's say the state has a restriction of canopy, of the size of a plant. You can go under what the state says, but you can't go beyond what the state says. And a critical distinction between the medical and the adult uses, in the medical end, in order to get a state license, that's you have to give a license permit or authorization for that entity to get one of these licenses. On the adult use end, you don't need that authorization. So that's why you need to do something proactive, otherwise the state can in fact issue a license, which is different on the medical end where you control what you want in your city.
All right. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kristen West.
Good evening, council members. I'm a citizen of Wildomar. Thank you for giving me three minutes of your time. And I just want to let you know that my husband and I went to the, the state offered conferences in San Diego and Los Angeles and Orange County and Long Beach. My husband and I went to those conferences to learn how to apply for a license. And in those conferences, we did learn that they do have a track and trace program that if you have a license, you'll be required to follow that track and trace program. There are computer programs that have to be approved by the state and a city can also require that as well. So it's something that's already the state is requiring as far as track and trace and so I know somebody else was commenting on that too. And they also will be auditing you too. So they will, they do have staff in place that they'll be sending people in to your businesses and counting the number and doing an audit and doing a financial audit and auditing your profit and loss and auditing all of your sales so that the city and the state is getting their fair share of the taxes. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. Thank you.
The next speaker is Bill Kaufman.
Mayor, council members. I want to give a little background on myself. I'm 74. I have a degree in mathematics, a master's degree in business, and I recently sold a medical company and a solar company and had the funds available to go in to investigate the medical marijuana business. Since then, I have opened a dispensary in Venice, California, Hollywood, Westwood, and hopefully very soon Santa Monica. Now, I've since sold three and I'm working on Santa Monica and I wanted to volunteer because I've been working with them for three years. They have a very, very, very defined ordinance. They have looked at CUPs, they've looked at zoning, and they decided the best way to go, the best way to collect taxes. And for your reference, I could tell you, a medical marijuana dispensary in Southern California does, at least mine, between $3.5 and $5 million on a yearly basis. And you might expect that same amount when it comes to Wildomar. But I think one of the things you've got to understand is cannabis is not all medical. I mean, we sell to the medical people, they must have it. But I'm guessing it's 20%. I'm guessing that the other 80% is a recreational use or it's a recreational use like alcohol type of thing. But you can go to a doctor and get a recommendation and everyone has a problem. They typically get a recommendation, they come in and we facilitate the people that really need it and we facilitate the people and try to educate them on cannabis. At the same time, all my dispensaries had herbal sections so that any patient that couldn't be necessarily completely satisfied with cannabis, we would have herbalists on hand. They could describe their symptoms and prescribe the kinds of things that they need. And I would suggest, and I'm looking at potentially Wildomar as an opening, I've sold my other ones, that we would have a full dispensary as well as we would have herbalists there, acupuncturists there to treat the patients because the people do need it. We treat, in Venice, we had 700 people waiting to be treated to come in and understand what cannabis can do for their ailments. So I implore you to look at this and don't look at this as some behind the black curtain stuff. It's not what it is. I mean, I've seen grandma's come in. I'd say, you know, I got a 103-year-old patient that comes in. I have a little girl that comes in. These people need this medicine. You can control it. You can say whatever you want, okay? But you've got to let your people have access to this. Believe me, it does help, okay? When it comes to law enforcement. And I've never had a robbery, I've never had an incident ever at any other dispensaries. We've had homeless people, "Can I have something?" And we do have compassion and we do try to help out people like that. But I've never, ever seen the police officers would come in, "How are you doing?" They come in, we have a wide open door.
All right. Thank you.
Next speaker is Arnold Mathias.
Good evening, mayor, city council. My name is Arnold Mathias. I'm a police officer in the city of San Antonio. And I kind of just want to give you a little bit of what I've seen in dealing with that. A lot of the time, I live right on the edge in Marietta, but I do pretty much all my business in Wildomar, driving through the city. From the law enforcement side, I see when dispensaries are ran illegally, that's where we run into a lot of the issues, okay? Because it is a hands-on cash business. But you're talking about now, state does have a tracking system in which they can't track it. Law enforcement does have access to that. So it's getting a lot better in that aspect. And I have seven daughters. It's all about zoning and putting it in the right place. We don't want a dispensary in a shopping center. You know, people don't go out and buy groceries, "Oh, I'm going to buy some groceries. Oh, look, the weed, let me go buy some weed." It's not that. You deal with specific people who need medical marijuana. And the city of Wildomar can benefit financially, regulated properly, and I would like to see the city of Wildomar in terms of growth happen. I'm right here. I deal with all my business here. I travel through the city a lot and there's a lot of potential for the city to grow. And law enforcement, as long as you're having, you're letting in businesses and you guys are regulating it, and this is a collaborative effort in terms of law enforcement, city council, the citizens who want it, and it can happen. Law enforcement in general is slow to this because the stigmatism has been on the dispensaries over the years, but that's, all that is changing and we have to embrace that. I think it's important. And there's a benefit for it, especially the city in terms of revenue coming in and that's a big part. You want to see the city grow because it's not just about marijuana, but you want to have better education. The revenue will allow the council to hire a few more police officers to assist with that. So I think it's more beneficial than it is. It's checks and balances, there's a scale there, but I think that if you-- It's checks and balances, there's a scale there, but I think that if you allow it into the city, regulate it, location's important, and it can, it can work. I believe it can work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Next speaker is Michael Johnson. Michael Johnson?
Nope.
No, Michael Johnson. Okay. Is it Tony or Tori?
Toby.
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 Oh, her.
Hi, my name is Toni Russo, and I'm here as an advocate for my daughter. My daughter had a seizure two years ago, a twelve-hour seizure, and from that, she's on a ventilator. They were heavy dosing her with Valium, which had her knocked out most of the time, and she was doing therapies. And since she had those seizures all the time, she was always out of it. So all those therapies, she can no longer do. Since we've been using CBD oil, and that has stopped the seizures. We have cut back on all the seizure medications, so that means that her organs are not getting messed up or... We cannot grow that. CBD, I'm not quite sure how they extract that from the plant, but I don't believe that we're able to grow something like that. So we are for having a medical marijuana store. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And all the speakers, go ahead.